All right, good evening. Welcome to the Hermiston City Council meeting for Monday, July eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a declaration of a quorum. We're going to excuse Counselor Linton this evening. Please join me in the flag slip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, this evening. See, Manager Smith, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, just the addition of a report from the school district. We had a substitute prepare the agenda, so.
Okay.
We see the superintendents here.
The big boss showed up tonight, so we better make sure.
Better make sure.
Yeah, okay, no other changes.
No.
All right, well, Hermiston School District Superintendent Mooney, you're up. Welcome.
Good evening. You had a substitute prepare the agenda, and I'm the substitute tonight. The school board actually moved their meeting till last week, so Mr. Bacon has the night off, and I thought I would come see you. Update of things going on. There are only fifty days until the first day of school. We're on the countdown. I cannot wait. We have a lot of projects going on. Summer program is in full swing. We are keeping a close eye on the temperatures. School buses obviously aren't air-conditioned, the big yellow buses, and so we did send some precaution out to parents today, letting parents know that it is hotter on the buses, but we know that if we cancel a day of summer program, we have kids that are at home in those same weather conditions, potentially without any air conditioning, and potentially not getting meals. So we're going to continue to run the program and just keep a close eye on the kiddos, provide water, those things, and obviously they'll spend more time indoors as the temperatures are really hot in the day, but that is a safe place for our kids to be in the summertime. There's structure, there's activities. We know that they're being supervised and they're getting their meals, so we're going to keep the program running. We do have registration up and going. There will be in-person support for parents registering their students. All students need to be registered by August second to have schedules and be routed up for buses on the first day of school. But we'll have in-person support this week, actually tomorrow night, and then on Thursday night, the ninth and the eleventh, and then again on the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth at the district office from twelve to eight P M. So parents can come in and get that support as they get registered. For all of our parents, we are switching to a new communications platform this year. We're going to Parent Square. It will put all of our communications kind of in in one platform, so we are excited moving forward to that. If you have driven by Highland Hills recently, you know that we've got some work going on there. That is the last of our bond projects in combination with kind of the tail end of our Esser project, so we are doing some work on the main office to create single entry, create some more office space, but also HVAC upgrades at Highland Hills, particularly in the spring, and in the fall, those classrooms can get pretty warm with the windows that we had there, so we've got some HVAC upgrades coming, and then some technology upgrades coming. We are also doing some tech upgrades this summer at Desert View, so I am excited about fifty days. I think a lot of people are kind of scrambling, working really fast to get things ready for the first day of school. We have kids on the twenty-eighth. So, any questions for me? August twenty-eighth. That is a Wednesday. It'll be our regular Wednesday schedule, so for our secondary kiddos, they will start an hour later, and our elementary kiddos will get out an hour earlier that day with our regular Wednesday schedule for the district.
How many summer kids did you have?
Eight hundred and fifty at the elementary level. So, yeah, and I'll say that I am serving on a summer learning committee for the state representing K- Twelve, and I am proud that over and over when I hear from districts across the state and other community-based organizations, what we offer here in Hermiston and in partnership with the city parks and rec is unlike what a lot of kids have access to across the state, and I think that the first year we took that project on, we kind of didn't know what we were getting into, but it has been very valuable to our community, provides a resource for our kids in the summer. Kids that might not get swim lessons, for example, were able to bridge a gap for them, to get them to swimming lessons and back, and just a great partnership with our community to provide that support to our families that need it. We know we have families that are working out in the fields, long hours, and when we know we have our kids in a place where they can be supervised and get their meals, that's an asset to our entire community, so I'm very proud of the the program we're able to offer here in Hermiston.
Yeah, awesome resource for our community, our families. Childcare is so expensive as well these days, and so provides a childcare resource for a lot of families that potentially couldn't afford them, and those kids would be home alone by themselves, and they're getting a couple of meals a day too, as well on top of that, and some education and fun.
Absolutely, and it is, it's, we call it summer program. It's not summer school. Our kids do a lot of fun things. There are sports camps, there you know, there are academic sports, definitely, but we do field trips and sports camps and other activities, so it's kind of a fun opportunity for our kids, and flexible hours. The district portion goes until just after lunchtime, and then Champions takes over, so for parents that only want their child to go part of the day, that works, and for parents that need that childcare longer, there is transportation at the end of the day as well.
Other questions? Yeah. Councilor Dr.
Dr. Mooney, the parents, do parents have to pay for Champions for the childcare program?
As a part of summer program, no. During the regular school year, yes, we partner with Champions during summer program, so students have to be registered for summer program to be able to attend Champions, but that full seven-to-seven program is free to families if they're registered, and it is for when we do registration. Registration happened in the spring for current Hermiston School District students.
I mean, I knew the answer, but I, I think it's a great opportunity for parents because how else would they be able to have their children in a safe location and have dinner even provided to them should they need it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, questions? Dr. Mooney, please thank your board for their leadership and allocation of the funds to make that program happen. Thank you for your leadership on that as well. It's a great resource to our kids and our families and our community, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
All right, we're now at the opportunity, our first opportunity for citizen input on non-agenda items. So if there are items that you would like to talk to the council about that aren't on our current agenda, please come up to the microphone up front, introduce yourself by name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes and direct them to me. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Rose Thomas. My address is eighty-three West Cherry, Hermiston, Oregon, nine seven eight three eight. And I wanted to talk about, what are you going to do about the Cooley House? I'm the neighbor. I've been here with you guys before. It's way above and beyond what I'm going to deal with anymore. I'm done. He's running a homeless camp back there now. I've talked to him multiple times about the garbage. He can't keep up with all the garbage because with all the people that stand back there, it's blowing into my yard, which I pay somebody to come pick it up because I'm not going to touch it, you know? They're over there smoking fentanyl and everything else, so I'm definitely not going to touch no garbage, but I pay a young man to come clean up the garbage, and I had enough, and I called Adam, and I said, every single time, I go, I'm going to tell you what my mom told me. Hit them where it hurts, in the pocket. I go, every single time, I gotta pay somebody to come clean up garbage from your yard, you're paying me. I'm no longer going to keep paying people to come clean up this garbage. I've asked you multiple times, please do something about the garbage, but now it's above and beyond. This is what I'm going through, and I've got video and everything else. First of all, theft of services. I watched them take two garbage cans over to Quickie Loop because Quickie Loop is closed on Sunday, walked it right on over there, put it in their garbage can. Now I'm watching this from my house, and I'm sitting there going, I know he is not going to put that garbage over there in their garbage. So, remind you, the garbage cans shut before they went over there with their garbage cans. Then, once they put all their garbage in there, it didn't shut anymore, which makes it be an overflow, and I know what time the garbage gets picked up because we all live in that neighborhood, so by the time Quickie Loop comes, the garbage is already picked up because of when they come in the morning, so they don't even know that these people are putting garbage in their garbage can. But what was mind-boggling to me is I watched it do it that morning because I'm up. I don't get much sleep because of all the drama next door. They took more to Pizza Hut, and I'm like, did these garbage people not see what they just did? This guy just walked in there, put the garbage in the garbage can, and walked right out and walked next door. So that's theft of services, but that's just one of the things. I'm tired of the shopping carts. They're all over my neighborhood. A lady started a fire over at the park, which is behind my house, then she started the fire behind the church. They were able to come over and stop it, but the lady argued with them. Me and her has gotten an argument. I told her to stay off my family's property. I've watched women and Johns pick up women. I watched Johns meeting the women over in the parking lot over at Pizza Hut. I'm watching people bathe. I watch people pee outside. You name it, I'm getting it. It's gotten to a point to where I said, this is unsanitary. He can't accommodate no homeless camp. You don't got no porta-potties. You can't, you're not letting them go, obviously, in your house and bathe because they're bathing outside. I'm watching it, and I've got it on video. I'm watching people come at night with their tents. I've got all on video where they're setting up their tents. People come, then they get up early in the morning, and then they leave, and I just want to know, what are you guys going to do about it? Because I'm tired of watching people flailing out. Literally, I watched a woman and stopped a man because I didn't know if he could see her in the road, in whatever she was looking for. I don't even know, and I'm trying to stop him. Don't hit her. And he goes, I saw her, Rose, and I was like, oh, hey, how you doing? And he goes, I saw. Don't worry. I go, I just didn't want you to hit her because she can't see that you're coming. And he goes, what's going on next door? And I go, well, hey, this is what I deal with every single day. He goes, there's no way, Rose. So we sat there and talked, and he goes, now, Rose, I've been here for fifteen minutes, and I've seen seven people come. He goes, and you're telling me this is acceptable in broad daylight on a Friday? I go, I deal with it twenty-four-seven. Friday ain't got nothing to do with it. I go, I've had all that I can take. I don't know what to do anymore. I go, I just put up with it. That's all I can do. He goes, but Rose, this is crazy what I'm watching. He goes, and if I didn't see it with my own eyes, I wouldn't believe it. I go, it is what it is. I go, people have lost renters. One guy, I go, he just lost his renter. The lady over here just lost her renter. I go, people are tired of it, but what do we do? I want to know, what are you going to do? Because it's out of hand now. It's above and beyond now. I used to deal with, you know, the little few things, but once the dope house got shut down on BB, Gortas, they all went to Adams. And the only reason that dope house got shut down has nothing to do with the police department. It has to do with the family coming from California and shutting it all the way down, putting everybody out, including Gorda. I found out everything that I needed to know. But now everybody's next door, so I'm dealing with extra people, and I want to know what's going to be done. Because I got to do something about it. If you guys aren't going to do nothing about it, I'm going to call whoever I got to call. I don't care if I got to call the Oregonian, Tri-City Herald. I don't care who I got to call, but I'm going to make it known what I'm living next door to, because I've had enough.
Rose, thanks for your comments this evening. We appreciate you coming and talking to us about your concerns.
Yeah, thank you.
Others? Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, items A through C. Do we need to pull any of those from the consent agenda? Any public comment on consent agenda items A through C? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Primmer, seconded by Counselor David Parthy, that we approved consent agenda items A through C as presented. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, seven-zero. All right, we're now on to our public hearing section of our council meeting. Annexations and comprehensive plan map and debt amendment for Three Rivers Oregon Property LLC Victory House Victory Lighthouse Church, Bangston, four N, two eight zero one B, tax lots fifteen-hundred, fifteen-oh-two, and fifteen-oh-three dash nineteen forty slash nineteen ninety slash twenty-one eighty, Northeast Tenth Street. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest or ex parte contact from the council? Okay, seeing none. Hearing guidelines will now be presented by city staff. Clint Spencer.
The city council is holding a hearing to consider a request for a comprehensive plan map amendment and annexation to the city of Hermiston. The city council will consider the request and render a decision based on criteria established in one-five-six-zero-eight and one-five-zero-zero-five of the Hermiston Code of Ordinances. The applicant proposes amending the comprehensive plan map designation and annexation of approximately twenty-five-point-nine acres of land located at the northeast corner of East Theater Lane and Northeast Tenth Street. The applicants are Dennis Geese and Larry Bangston. The applicable substantive criteria relied upon by the city in rendering the decision to amend the comprehensive plan map and annex the property are contained in one-five-six-zero-eight and one-five-zero-zero-five of the Hermiston Code of Ordinances. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations which the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue by the close of the record at or following the hearing, in person or by letter, precludes appeal to Luba based on that issue. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to Luba based on that issue. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The city council shall grant such a request by continuing the hearing pursuant to O R S one-nine-seven-seven-nine-seven-six-B or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony pursuant to O R S one-ninety-seven-seven-nine-seven-six-C. For this hearing, the process begins with the staff report, followed by testimony from the applicants and other supporters of the application. This will be followed by any opponents to the application, and finally, a rebuttal by the applicant will be allowed. The public hearing portion of the procedure will then be closed, and the city council will consider the information and testimony received, adopt findings of fact, and may render a decision on the comprehensive plan map amendment and annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Hearing is now open. The city staff will now present its report. Mr. Spencer?
Yes, thank you. May we have the PowerPoint up too, please?
So tonight, Dennis Geese has submitted an application to amend the comprehensive plan map designation for approximately twenty-five-point-nine acres of land that's located at the northeast corner of East Theater Lane and Northeast Tenth Street. You'll see that area on the monitors here in town. The two tracks are under separate ownership. Mr. Geese owns the north track that's highlighted, and Victory Lighthouse Church owns the southern tract. The owners have mutually agreed to file a single application for annexation and comp plan amendment mainly in order to more efficiently use time and resources. The city charges a flat fee for applications, and it's much more efficient, especially in terms of doing your traffic analysis to include as many parcels as possible into one application. Each tract is contiguous with the city limits right now in Northeast Tenth Street. The land is proposed for annexation as low-density residential, R-one zoning, and the comp plan map amendment will change this from the city's current future residential designation to low-density residential. These properties currently sit within the urbanizable portion of our urban growth boundary. You'll see on the second map that they're in an area that's labeled F-R. That stands for future residential. Immediately to the west is that M designation, what they're proposing to change it to, covering the school and additional lands to the west. These properties sit within a generally rural, but I would call it rapidly urbanizing portion of our urban growth boundary. To the west is the newly constructed Loma Vista Elementary School, and there are several single-family subdivisions which are either actively under construction in the case of Simran Terrace, or are approved by the city and awaiting construction, in the case of Upland Meadows, which is immediately adjacent to Loma Vista and approved earlier this year. To the north and east lie basically undeveloped land and several single-family rural estates, and then to the south is some single-family residential that's rural, and two manufactured dwelling parks, Vista Mobile Home Park and Country Square Mobile Home Park. The current F-U-ten zone is a residential urbanizable zone that's intended to preserve large lots within our U G Bs to make them easier to bring into the city for future development at urban densities later. You'll note that's a ten-acre holding zone. Each of these tracks is about twelve acres, so fulfilling exactly what it's intended. And because this land is designated as future residential, changing it from this F-U-ten holding zone to an R-one zoning is basically an implementation of our comprehensive plan. There's no additional analysis required because our housing needs analysis is already assuming that this land is going to develop as residential and in the city. Utilities are available and adjacent to the property in Northeast Tenth Street. The city has installed water lines as part of the water tank development. The school district also installed sewer lines as part of Loma Vista development. The planning commission met on June twelfth to review this application, and they made a recommendation that the city council amend the map as proposed, designate the property as R-one, and then subsequently annex the land to the city as R-one, subject to the five conditions of approval that are in your staff report and listed here on the monitor. It's important to remember that with condition number one, because this is a comp plan amendment that's taking place out in the county, it has to be co-adopted by Yuma-Tilla County before it takes effect, so that means that an additional set of hearings gets held at the county level in front of the county planning commission and the Yuma-Tilla Board of Commissioners. Should that co-adoption of the change from future residential to low-density residential fail, then a new complant that makes the annexation automatically fail and a new application is necessary. Other than that, all of the streets adjacent to it will be required to be brought up to urban standards at the time development occurs, and county access permits will be required for any future developments since all of the roads that services are currently county roads. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we're going to open it up first to public testimony, so people wishing to speak are asked to state their name and mailing address and limit testimony to five minutes, and we're going to start with proponents who would like to speak. Any neutral parties that would like to speak? Any opponents who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. The hearing's closed. City staff will now present its finding of fact.
You have several pages of findings in your staff report. They are as adopted by the planning commission at their June meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions on them. Otherwise, I would recommend that they be adopted as submitted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spencer. Counsel, questions? Yeah.
Traffic. East Theater Lane is wholly inadequate for what is going on there now. And
Are you talking east of Tenth or the whole thing?
Which, yeah.
Okay, from three ninety-five?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Until you get to the top of the hill, it's all right. After that, no, it's not. Now you've got school buses, you've got a lot of extra traffic. And, you know, if they're going to widen the road or do whatever it is they can do, then
The theater lane, as it sits now, is getting widened in phases. You know, the city went through and installed those two major travel lanes with our grant money. As Simran Terrace went in, they widened out their south portion. Monta Vista Homes has their approval on the north side, which will connect the wider paving from the end of the school district to the Sunset Estates. So that
In and out, and in and out.
It will no longer go in and out. That's what I'm saying. At that point, with the exception of that little bit north of the Mobile Home Park, that'll be the only part where we'll be going in and out, because as each of these developments has come in, we've been requiring them to widen half of the street to the minor collector status.
Well, so long as it's improved, I'm all right with it, but it currently is inadequate.
What we're considering tonight has nothing to do with that.
Yes and no. Yes, you should consider it because you want to think about the long-term impacts, but the actual road improvements are conditioned on residential development.
Right. So the northeast Tenth Street, though, that has to be improved.
Yes.
Right, and then the east theater part, east of Tenth Street, has to be
Has to be improved.
So the east side of Tenth Street will now be the same standard as
As the west side.
West side, like in front of the school district.
Yeah.
Will it skip that section that's not being annexed in?
It will have, it will skip that section. Then that's exactly what Counselor Myers is saying about going in and out.
And we can't require that as a part of a condition of approval that that has to be improved, too.
Not as a condition of approval for a map change. You can for a condition of development if it's determined at that time that the amount of traffic might require widening. What we probably would not be able to require would be curb gutter sidewalk, but you may be able to require rebuilding it to the full width at that point.
Are there crosswalks going to be installed?
That's another one that we won't know until we have a actual application. When we did have our pre-app with them, talking with our development staff, we looked at the Loma Vista accesses and tried to make sure that one of the street connections would line up with the existing driveway going into Loma Vista, so if a crosswalk was needed, we could put one there.
Yeah, good. I'm guessing that people are going to want to build houses there that are close to Loma Vista that have children, and it's walkable. Having a crosswalk across Tenth Street would be a nice addition. What's the speed limit out there?
Mark, do you remember from the topic that we had on the flashers?
Forty-five? It's twenty-five during the school hour. During school time, it's twenty-five. Well
And then it's forty-five the rest of the time, right?
Yeah. Yeah. It's forty-five, so that can be amended or adjusted at the city councils.
Not as long as it's a county road, but we can make the request to the
We'd have to petition the county to adjust it. Okay. Yeah, Counselor Dr.
When the annexation, if it passes, if it's accepted, does that mean that now the police department will also be taking care of all of that area, too?
They will be eligible to patrol, yes, because that whole area will be in the city limits. Even though it's a county road, the city limits overlays it.
So what potentially is the population that they will be acquiring?
You could, I think from what I put in the staff report, based on their preliminary plans, they're looking at about seventy lots between the two different areas, so that could be up to a hundred and fifty if they did duplex development. Additional houses.
One of the conditions on there, one of the maps that I looked at had a park on it. Is that accurate?
The only place there's a park is down in the Simran Terrace area.
I'm going to have to go back and look at the map now. Other questions? What is the site plan exhibit tax lot 1502, 1503? There is a walk-in park amphitheater.
Oh, that, yes, that is part of the church development.
Okay.
That is part of their, the Victory Lighthouse would like to add an amphitheater in the future to for the church services to be held outside.
And who's responsible for that part?
That would be the church.
Okay, so it's not going to be a city park?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just council always needs to be mindful of every additional park that we add to the um inventory of the expense and time and manpower that it takes to manage those parks. So when I saw that on there, I was concerned that we were adding another park to the already large list of parks and rec requirements.
Yeah, for a city park, we would not put one in such close vicinity to the Simran Terrace Park.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, councillor Drong.
Have you received any written or any written complaints or any phone calls about this particular annexation?
I have not.
Any other questions from the council?
All right, um, can I get a motion to adopt the findings of fact?
So moved.
Second.
And moved by councillor Primmer, second by councillor Barone, that we accept the findings of fact as presented. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. And motion to impose conditions of approval. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
And moved by councillor McCarthy, second by councillor Harden, that we impose conditions of approval. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Moving on to ordinance number 2358, comprehensive plan map amendment, Three Rivers Oregon LLC, Victory Lighthouse Church, Bangston, four and 280 2801B tax lots 1500, 1502 and 1503 dash 1940 slash 1990 slash 2180 Northeast 10th Street. Mr. Smith.
Yes, so this is the adoption of the comprehensive plan amendments. They'll be it's separated into two ordinances, one for the comp plan amendments, the other for the annexation. So this is first to consider the comp plan amendments.
Okay, any council comments? Okay, any public comment about ordinance number 2358, comprehensive plan map amendment? All right, seeing none. Mayor requests first reading of the ordinance be read by title only. Calls for a roll call. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Mr. Tubby.
First reading, first reading of ordinance number 2358, an ordinance amending the city of Hermiston comprehensive plan map to convert certain lands from urbanizable status to urban status located within the urban growth boundary of the city of Hermiston in accord with the provisions of policy six in the city's comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Mayor requests that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting and that second reading be by title only and calls for a roll call. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Mr. Tubby.
Second reading by title only of ordinance number 2358, an ordinance amending the city of Hermiston comprehensive plan map to convert certain lands from urbanizable status to urban status located within the urban growth boundary of the city of Hermiston in accord with the provisions of policy six in the city's comprehensive plan.
Well, I would entertain a motion that ordinance number 2358 be adopted and become effective 30 days co-adoption by the city council and Yumitila County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by councillor Primmer, second by councillor Barone, that we that we adopt ordinance number 2358 and it become effective 30 days after co-adoption by the city council and the Yumitila County Board of Commissioners. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Ordinance number 2359, annexation Three Rivers Oregon LLC slash Victory Lighthouse Church slash Bangston, four and 2801B tax lots 1500, 1502 and 1503 dash 1940 slash 1990 slash 2180 Northeast 10th Street. Mr. Smith.
Yes, so now we'd be considering the annexation of the same lands that we've been discussing. And I'm sure we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by the council or comments? Yeah, councillor Barone.
Just a comment, um, I think this is just another really great victory for for the water tower that we have up there and the development it's creating up in that area. So just really happy to see this move forward.
Yeah. Agreed. Any other comments? Might have something to do with the school district building a school right there, too. Probably couldn't have happened without the water tower and the city's uh you know, involvement in building the road out and all the sewer and investments that we co-jointly uh, put in out there. So yeah, the city's investment in that made a huge difference. And I think that's allowing property to be developed and more housing to be built for our community, which is a huge win. We all know that we need more housing, so good point. Other comments, questions? Okay, any uh public comment about annexation of 2359, ordinance number 2359? All right, seeing none. Mayor requests first reading of the ordinance be read by title only and calls for a roll call. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Tubby.
First reading of ordinance number 2359, an ordinance annexing certain real property abutting East Theater Lane and Northeast 10th Street, describing said real property, withdrawing said real property from special districts and designating zoning.
Mayor requests that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting and that the second reading be by title only and calls for a roll call. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Mr. Tubby.
Second reading by title only of ordinance number 2359, an ordinance annexing certain real property abutting East Theater Lane and Northeast 10th Street, describing said real property, withdrawing said real property from special districts and designating zoning. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion that ordinance number 2359 be adopted, become effective 30 days after co-adoption by a city of by the Hermiston City Council and the Yumitila County Board of Commissioners, ordinance number 2358?
So moved.
Second.
And moved by councillor McCarthy, second by councillor Harden, that we adopt ordinance number 2359 and it become effective 30 days after co-adoption by the city council and Yumitila County Board of Commissioners, ordinance number 2358. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. So any pushback from county? No, haven't had any feeling that this was going to be a problem? No?
No, none at all.
Great. Well, congratulations to Three Rivers Oregon LLC and Victory Lighthouse uh on the addition of the property uh into our community and for them taking on the challenge of developing more housing for our community. So we appreciate their investment. Uh, this is a lot of time and investment into uh our community and I'm sure it will pay off for them. So congratulations. Resolution 2332, master fee resolution update, add business license fee. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, in January this year, you adopted uh a business license ordinance. Um, but at that time, wanted to take a uh deeper look at the the actual fee uh that would be uh related to that. And especially to engage uh members of the business community in that discussion. And so a committee was formed and they held a couple of different meetings. We did some polling. And at their June 10th meeting, uh, they voted to recommend the uh the council to adopt the the fee schedule as we presented in in January uh with a um, a base fee uh for up to five employees and then a $15 per employee with a $1,000 maximum on the largest businesses, which would be over 50. And that would be for a business with a permanent location within the city limits. And if there's a business with that does not have a permanent location, then it's a hundred dollar base, $20 employee and a $1,200 cap. So um, in the staff report, we kind of went into, just to give you an idea of how we're starting to look at implementation. Again, the implementation would begin January 1st of 2025. And we would um, as we work out the final kind of implementation, we would be communicating with the the businesses, working to make sure they understand what's going to be expected. And so, you know, we're requesting um any feedback on what was kind of put in the staff report, but also uh requesting that we adopt this as uh recommended by the uh ad hoc committee on business license fees.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Questions by the council?
Just a comment, um it what the vote had only had uh at that committee meeting, only had one person on the committee vote against. Uh, the rest of that committee did vote in favor of of this, just in case that the council wants to take that into consideration as far as how the vote went.
I think it was six to one, if I remember correctly. Um, one of the questions I had, uh, it was stated in the newspaper, one of the news sources, that there were certain exemptions, like certain businesses were exempt, realtors specifically, were mentioned. Can you explain that?
Yeah, I'll, Mr. Morgan put together uh this staff uh report, so I'll let him kind of talk through it.
Yeah, I think what was included in the newspaper was a little bit of a misinterpretation on the exemption piece. What it was talking about was uh, for the example being with um realtors, and that was included in the staff report. Um, that would be an example where uh somebody like them or beauticians, those types of things, where they may be technically their own independent operators, but they're all operating underneath the umbrella of, say, a larger real estate agency. If the real estate agency has a business license, and as long as it takes into account those realtors that are operating and counts them as employees, then those realtors themselves, even though they may be separate entities and not counted as employees in other instances, they would be counted as employees there and they wouldn't have to get their own business license. So that's again, kind of gets down to the nitty-gritty of how some of these things are going to have to be interpreted. And so it'll raise lots of questions like that.
Right, so we didn't go through and handpick our favorite friends and exclude them or exempt them, right?
Correct. And and we did spend some time in conversation with the city of Pendleton, who right now has been implementing this specific uh type of a uh fee structure. And so just getting their thoughts, how they've been able to be successful and and the and the the kind of pitfalls they've seen. So that was very helpful as we looked at, as we start, and we'll engage them more, but as we look at how we're going to implement this.
Any other questions from the council? I was thankful for the committee and the committee members, um local business members, Chamber of Commerce uh for participating. And I think there was eight members of the committee. I think councillor Myers was the only one absent at the last meeting, but you were at the first meeting. Um, and so good participation and good feedback. So I appreciate their willingness to participate and give some recommendations to the city as well. And and uh, like councillor McCarthy said, um, got approved six to one. Um, so that was nice to uh see that they fully support this as well. Any other questions from the council? Comments? Any public comment on resolution 2332? Okay, can I get a
There is a comment.
What?
There is a comment.
Come on up. Please, sir, come on up.
Uh, Brian Owens, 665 West Division Avenue, Hermiston, Oregon. Just a question, because I've never heard of this before. Uh, I am a small business owner. So what is this going to do to me? I own the Hermiston roller rink.
Right.
Basically, we don't really have, we hire a couple of high school kids maybe, but we're basically a nonprofit because we don't make money. We just stay open for the kids.
So we have a extensive um list of things that will be um part of the business license fee and and how that will be applied to businesses like yours. Um, it'll be posted online, is that correct? And
Yeah, it will be posted online. Well, I'm sure we'll also be putting information out in other, every other way that we can. Even mailing business.
We've put out multiple um pieces of information. Obviously, we haven't reached everybody yet. Um, we'll work with the chamber and our other business partners to continue to provide information between now and the first of January. And so you'll have an opportunity to talk also with who's going to be in charge. Mr. Morgan?
Um
We haven't decided that yet.
Fully
We'll figure out who's going to be in charge, but you'll have somebody who you can talk to about that as well.
Okay, it's just basically another license I'm going to have to purchase and
Correct.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Sorry, Mr. McCarthy.
Um, just just a comment that um the full uh fee schedule as proposed is available currently on the city of Hermiston website. So you can see exactly what's being proposed. If you want the full breakdown, you do have access to that.
And all the meetings leading up to that as well, uh explaining why we went down this pathway and the need for the resources for the community as well. Those are all available online as well. So if you're really interested, there's lots of information out there that you can um observe the whole conversation from the last year we spent having this conversation. All right, any other public comment? Okay, can I get a motion to adopt resolution 2332 and laid upon the record?
Yeah.
So moved. Second.
I'm not sure who beat you, but uh councillor Primmer will give you the uh motion to adopt. And the second, councillor McCarthy. Uh, can I get a roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously, seven zero, to adopt resolution 2332 and laid upon the record. All right, we're on to committee reports. Anyone? Any committee reports meet last couple of weeks? No? Yes, councillor Drong.
The library board met and basically we heard a report um on the construction that is going to take place um at the library, how the the plans that they're making to move some of the books over to the Carnegie Hall Building. Um, some people that are hired temporarily to be able to assist them with that process because it's very tedious and putting the other books away. Um, my understanding is that uh the books will be able to be housed in a dry location, which I'm very happy to hear that um on 10th Street. And so um they think that maybe they might be moving by September, right? The movement
Be moved, be open again in the first of September, starting to move in August.
Yeah, so they will be, the library will be working on communicating um all of that to the rest of the community so that people know when, you know, they will expect to see the movement happen, the hours and things like that. So the library will be open, but not as many books will be available until you know, the construction is is over.
So But they will remain open during the process?
Uh, yes.
There will be a couple of weeks where we will be completely closed in August as we make that transition, but trying to make that as short as possible.
Yeah, so about 20% of the books, the selection will be housed at Carnegie and 80% will be stored away until the construction is over.
20% at Carnegie and 80% will be stored? Will um will users be able to access that other 80%?
No, that that won't be inactive circulation. It'll be long-term storage.
Okay, so right now, a person, when they go to the library and they don't have a book, they can request it. Is that how they'll have to go through that process now?
I mean, none of that portion will be available.
Oh, none of that?
None of that, 80%.
And how long do we expect construction to take?
Nine, I I'm going to say 12 months. We're hoping for nine, but I'm going to say 12.
But the library is part of a a bigger system where
Right.
If they, if somebody needed a specific book, it could be requested from that system.
Correct.
And
That's what I was suggesting.
Oh, okay, so the the sage system that they that we're in, you know, that's all of the libraries basically in eastern Oregon, including university libraries and college libraries. So those would still be available on the loan program that we currently work. Yes.
Good.
I didn't understand, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, councillor Peterson.
And and the online um library where you can download ebooks will also still be available, correct?
Yes, and in fact, we've uh tried to enhance some, we've added some different programs to try to enhance the electronic uh collection so that that's available during that time as well.
May I add something else?
Yes.
On that report, um, the summer reading program, they had 133 children sign up. Uh, 56 of them were teens and 81 adults. And I, they also encouraged a lot
And I, they also encouraged a lot of the city employees to participate in the program. I don't know how many folks were able to participate in that, but that's the count that they have. And they were also, the director was very appreciative of the fact that he was able to go and make some presentations during the summer or about the summer program with the kiddos. And something that maybe he will rethink for next year is that students don't get out of the summer program until after two. By the time they get home, it's around three. And so I think the summer program ends right around that same timeframe. So, you know, that's something, the kids that are attending the summer program in the Hermiston School District then would not be able to participate in the summer reading program that the library was promoting. So that is something that he will consider for next year.
Okay. Any other council reports on committees or liaison? Yeah, councillor Bro.
Not a report, just, I guess maybe an update. We're going to have our EOTech meeting this Thursday. Typically, we have it the first Thursday of the month. We have the Fourth of July, obviously. And so we're going to meet this week. And so we'll give council an update because we know that bear and radio and everything are set up in August. So we'll give you guys that update after.
Busy and added, it looks like, yeah. Okay. Any other council committee reports? Okay, mayor's report. Just want to thank president Primmer again for filling in for me last meeting, so thank you for that. I'm trying to be absent fairly regularly to try and give you some experience.
You've, you've accomplished your objective, certainly.
Also, I got notice on July third that from Business Oregon, we were awarded the Community Block Grant that we applied for, for the Agape House, for one point five million dollars.
Wow.
So that should go a long ways in helping them with their food storage project. So that's good news. See the resources coming into our community. Other council reports. Yeah, councillor McCarthy?
I just want to remind everyone also that, I know I brought this up at the last meeting, but the Hermiston Chamber of Commerce is inviting everyone to attend their summer mixer event, which will be July eighteenth at six thirty out at Bennett Botanical Gardens, catered and everything. Tickets, I believe, are forty dollars and you can pick them up from the Hermiston Chamber of Commerce office.
Thank you. I would be there, but the OMA conference in Climas Falls is that same weekend, so. And as the current reigning mayor of the year, I have to be there to present the new mayor of the year, which I'm super excited about because I've already been privy to it. So excited to do that presentation. Other council reports? Nothing?
Yeah.
Councillor Primmer?
Sir. Yeah, um, so the Fourth of July event appeared to go over pretty well. We, I, as Chief Ed missed him, sent out to most of us, his, his folks were beyond busy that night and did an outstanding job of taking care of what needed to be taken care of. Myself and others from the sheriff's office were also out doing the out par of town. And of course, every once in a while, we had to get in, you know, if it happened in front of us, we kind of had to take care of it. So there was at least one occurrence that I had to take care of inside the city. Sorry, Jase. But, but it, overall, it looked like it was pretty, pretty fairly well attended. Looked like there wasn't too many fireworks caused fires in the area. We were pretty lucky in that respect, considering the dryness of the area. So, but all things considered, we did well as a city. So I'm, I'm pretty proud of the way that this turned out this, this year.
Very good points. Chief, please thank your officers for their diligence and hard work and overtime that they put in over the holiday weekend. I know they worked a lot of hours and kept the city from burning down. And the community, thank you for protecting our city right now because it's very dry and very hot out there. Be mindful of any fires. Don't start any right now. Bad, bad.
Bad idea.
Any other council comments? Mr. Smith?
Since I was just returning today from my vacation, I really don't have anything for a separate report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
All right, we do have a executive session planned for this evening. So we are going to recess for executive session. City Council of the city of Hermiston will now meet in executive session, the executive session room for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to litigation with legal counsel. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two H, which allows the city council to meet in executive session to consult regarding the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are excluded. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, the council will return to open session, which the audience may attend. The executive session will last approximately ten minutes. Sorry. We're going to reconvene the Hermiston City Council meeting to order. Any other comments, Mr. Smith, council? All right, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.